Thanks for those that are here, especially thanks for those that are at home and abroad that are with us. Good to be together. We wanted to do a roll call. If Shannon could do a roll call for us.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Bob Davis.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Dr. Kevin Martin.
Here.
Mandy Olson.
Here.
Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Erica Livinow.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Scott Olender.
Here.
Dr. Tim O'Brien.
Here.
Vicky Macharo.
She's having trouble getting on. She's trying.
Okay. Terry Barr.
Here.
Michelle Whirl.
Here.
Amanda Scott. And then anybody else that I have met?
Ron Erlecker.
And Jeff Yamato.
Yeah.
Marcus Jaffe.
Marcus Jaffe. And Bill Manowit.
And anybody else that wishes to identify? Okay, well, thanks. Thanks, everybody. So first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda? If not, can we have a motion to pick up the agenda? Motion by Matt, second by Erica. All in favor say aye.
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 We have the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve or consent.
So I'll move to approve the consent. Second by Terry. All in favor say aye.
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 So close. Public comment and announcement. Do we have anyone that has a public comment? Or announcement? Okay, thank you. Item five is presentations and a review of rehab services. Bill and Marcus, thanks for being here.
Thanks. Actually, I wish I was there. I mean, I wish I was on site. That'd be a blast, even if it was, I don't know, something about being in Washington instead of stinky old Nebraska, right? So. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Do you mind if I screen share?
Go ahead.
Perfect. Here we go. Okay, so we'll just kind of run through some slides here to kind of help us give us something to look at while we talk. So first of all, I don't feel like we've reported to the board since 2019. That's what it feels like anyway. So we're just going to take a quick history of what happened last year with all of our numbers and everything that we've been going through. One of the things that we've really focused on over 2020 and trying to get our staff back up to snuff as far as bringing them back onboard to a full caseload is we've really been focusing on their productivity. So you can see, whereas in the early parts of 2019, we were running about 50 and then quickly up to about 60% productivity hovering around there for all of 19 in the beginning of 20. And then as we started to come back from the pandemic in May of 20, Marcus was really successful in helping his staff become productive and really efficient in the amount of hours that they were spending in the facility. So really, our objective there was to try and decrease exposure risk to all of our patients and all of our employees. So we really focused on making sure we were efficient. As of March, we are still hovering around the 72 percentile, which is pretty fantastic. So. You can also see what happened with our visits. For reference, I put 2019 on there. That would be the reddish brown line there. And then you can see the sharp drop off in April. You know, March, we took a hit. April, we were down to, you know, Marcus, help me out with as far as like staffing. I think we were down to just a handful of therapists and one assistant, one administrative assistant. But what were our actual numbers come April?
Right. So once we hit, well, can everyone hear me? Good. So once we hit April, we were down to, we actually went from eight therapists usually working on the PT side down to just myself working an outpatient and one therapist working a few hours inpatient. And we moved our SLP and our OT, we have four working on that side over into our PT side. So we only had a total of three people out of 12 normally working due to the closure we had in March and April.
So, you know, when you look at what Marcus and just a handful of people were able to accomplish in April with the limited visits that they were allowed to do, you know, they really did great. But then we've seen a steady increase through 2020 throughout and even into March of this year where we're seeing an increase over our 2019 numbers, which is fantastic. I mean, we're showing some pretty good growth as well as that increased productivity. And we'll go to the next slide and really break it down as to where the growth patterns are really coming in. PT is holding steady with 2019 numbers as far as the number of visits. But OT and speech, we have really been able to grow those programs. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. But you can see from the graphs that speech visits are way up, OT visits are way up compared to 2019, 2020. Of course, 2020 first quarter wasn't really affected. As you know, those numbers really started dropping off in March. So we're really excited about what's happening in the therapy department right now, especially with OT and speech with the growth that they're showing. So any questions so far on any of our visit numbers or any of our productivity?
Move that so we can see the rest of those charts.
Yeah, Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Matt Altman, right, on the board. The first slide that you had was, it sounds like things were around 70% productivity. And you said that was fantastic. I was just curious, is that sort of the goal? Is that industry standard as sort of what we're looking at is about 70%?
Our goal that we have for all of our employees is about 75%. So we're still a little bit below the goal for the location. But one of the things, and you'll see, as far as industry standard, I would say that that is typically above what hospitals generally run. What we usually see in hospitals is running around that 60%. But we're, you know, we're trying to hold our clinicians to a higher level, but while still giving them time to actually take care of the things that they need to do and allow us to treat on that one-on-one patient care-focused agenda. So yes, you know, our goal for RehabVisions is 75%. We're still a little bit below that. I know Marcus continues to work on that with his staff. But where you might see some contract companies coming in at 85, 90%, that's not us. We are definitely looking to give our patients an experience and also allow our clinicians time to actually have the crucial conversations with their physicians, with their healthcare counterparts, and to make sure that they're really focused on a multidisciplinary approach. So it allows for them to go to some of the meetings and make sure that we're meeting the overall needs of the patient rather than just focused on seeing a patient, kicking them out without talking to them.
All right. Thanks, Bill. That provides some nice context. Appreciate it.
Any other questions so far? Just to kind of give a, you know, kind of the same type look. If we're looking at units, which really tends more to look at the billable aspect of our visits. Don't know which way y'all like to look at things, so I put both in there. You can see that our units overall with all disciplines were back to our 2019 volumes, which is fantastic. And actually, in March, we're starting to increase those volumes over 2019. So again, really excited about the comeback that the staff was able to make there in Ellensburg. Evaluations. So this is really kind of an interesting graph. You'll see that our evaluations are actually a little bit lower than 2019, which you say, well, gee, your units and your visits were up compared to 2019, but your evaluations are actually a little below. What that tells me is that the clinicians are actually just doing more with the patients that they have, which I think is a fantastic thing. They're able to, you know, what they're doing is they're providing more care. And so I'm always a fan of more care and taking care of the needs of the people. So I was excited to see, while we're not quite up to where we were in 2019 on evaluations, we're definitely giving the patients, I think, a better experience than what they were having even in 2019. And I thought 2019, they were doing a great job. So I'm really impressed with what they're up to. Patient satisfaction with Press Ganey. I'm going to let Marcus take this one because frankly, I don't understand Press Ganey. Marcus, go for it.
You bet. First of all, thank you, Board of Commissioners and senior leaders for letting Bill and I come and talk. It's really a treat to come and be able to, and I think it's sort of brag on what it is that my staff does every day because they do really great work. And I think it shows in this Press Ganey scores here. So a lot of you may already know this, so I might be saying something that isn't new to you. But Press Ganey is the way that we measure the quality of our patient interactions, and that's really what it's all about. At the end of the day, we have all these charts about productivity and about units, but it's how much value does our patient feel that they're receiving from us? So we know that if you see that big, long rectangle kind of in the middle left side there, that's 0% to 100 going from left to right. And that black line there is the 75% mark. So where we land is that little black dot to the right of it. So we're at 85.12%. Where we want to be is that 75% top box. So what that means for top box is when a patient is done with us, they get mailed to them a little questionnaire. It says, you know, how did you do? How was your scheduling? Did you feel like you were being listened to, et cetera, et cetera? And they score it from a 1 to 5, I believe. And if you get a 5, that's considered a top box. So of all the questions that are sent out to our folks and then turned back in, we're at 85.12%. The other thing I want to brag on there is on the bottom right, it has a little bit of a historical perspective. So you see in top box score under 2019, we're at 87, 80, and 85. So not only are we above the standard of 75, but we're consistent through a global pandemic. So even though we had to call patients, we had to cancel them. And then when they came back, it was a totally new experience for them in the way they checked in, in the way that they were, you know, ushered around the clinic to ensure that they had less exposure. We were still able to do it in a way where they still found a lot of quality. They understood why we were doing that, even though it really sort of messed with what they were usually expecting. So that's our Press Ganey scores, and I'm proud of them. And it's because of our staff doing a great job.
One of the things I thought was really impressive about this, and frankly, it's just a matter of looking back at one of our reports that we did back in 2019. And in that quarter, and it was early 2019, we had an N value of three, meaning we had three reports. So if you look at the N value, again, bottom right corner, 2019 is a total 92. 2020, during a pandemic year, we had 116 people responding to our surveys to let us know how we're doing. To me, that's pretty phenomenal, that people are willing to take a little bit of time and tell us how, give us some feedback on what we're doing, even in the middle of a health crisis. So I thought that was pretty impressive and speaks highly of the community as well. So good times. So evaluation response times and our cancellation rate is always something that we're trying to watch and we're trying to make sure that we're meeting expectations there. With our inpatient, of course, our standard for our goal is less than 24 hours. And I believe we're compliant to that expectation as far as I can tell. And on the outpatient side, which tends to be a little bit of a stickier wicket, our standard is less than 72 hours. Now, our standard of less than 72 hours really means that we're trying to get a hold of the patient and schedule them within the 72 hours. Currently, all of our patients are contacted within a 48 hour to schedule their initial evaluations. And so, but our evaluations are scheduled out to two to three weeks. We would like to see those down around two weeks, and we'll talk a little bit here in a bit. We'll talk a little bit here in a minute about our recruiting efforts and what we kind of have coming up the pike. But we are scheduled two to three weeks out. We do have an option to slide forward to fill canceled slots. As y'all are probably aware, this has a lot to do with whether or not the patients are available for the times. You know, you have a patient where you might have a 1 o'clock appointment open, and they're like, I can't do 1 o'clock. So, you know, that plays into that as well. But, and then you look at our specialty programs like vestibular and women's health, of course, you know, those we might have a little bit falling outside of the time schedule. But for the most part, I think our average is right around two to three weeks of getting somebody in. The real issue with our outpatient response times really comes down to your surgical orthopedic patients because those are the patients that need to get in, you know, fast before scar tissue starts to lay down and restrict movement. Those patients are prioritized and they're seen within the week unless they're unavailable, you know, as far as the patient schedule goes. Unless they're unavailable, they're in within the week. So we squeeze those in at every opportunity we can. So the cancellation rate really helps us in pulling together some of our evaluation response times because, of course, we try and keep, as we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we're really trying to watch our productivity and make sure our patients are busy. And so it's the cancellation rate that we're really trying to decrease. But at the same time, we're maximizing those cancellations to slide some of these evaluations in, to slide some of the patients forward. And, but even at that, our cancellation rate is our standard, our goal is less than 15%. During the health crisis, that was pretty painful on our cancellation schedule as we had to cancel patients over and over. And, of course, we had days where we just had to cut everybody back. We do have the health crisis and our average increased to 16%. Previous to that, our cancellation ratio was around 12%. Right now, as of January and February, we're back down to about 15%. And I know the front office staff are whittling that number down and really trying to decrease that.
So, Bill, can you hear me? This is Julie. This might be a question for Marcus. I know sometimes in order to discharge an inpatient, it's important that we get a PT evaluation done, and we were having some problems getting those done, particularly on Saturday and Sunday. Has that been sorted out?
Yeah, we've had continuous seven-day-a-week 365, I don't know, for the last year and a half. And we really, you know, we're in there every day, at least from the physical therapy perspective. And then we have SLP.
And I appreciate that. That was difficult for the discharge planners to work around. So it's great that you're able to be there every day now.
Luckily, we do have some PRN staff that are willing to come in and work weekends so that we can decrease the number of rotations that our full-time therapists spend on the weekends. But I know that they are still included on that weekend rotation. So we really do appreciate the extra time that our clinicians give over the weekend. So. Okay, so let's talk about staffing for just a minute. In 2020, we were actually, as we started to come back onboard, we were able to hire a couple of people as well, which was kind of a special treat. Jennifer Kwong, if I'm saying the last name right. I asked her today, and now I'm sitting here going, I think she said Kwong. So anyway, there we go. We'll run with it. Anyway, Jennifer, if you're listening, I apologize. But anyway, Jennifer came onboard. She's been an absolute treasure. She's mostly a general orthopedic, but she'll see just about anything. And she's starting to see a little bit of the pediatric caseload out there as well. Is that correct, Marcus? Do I have that correct?
Yeah, so she's been great at orthopedics. She's seen quite a bit of lymphedema over the last few months. And she's been a champ at including the PT aspect of pediatrics into our already existing and burgeoning pediatric program from SLP and OT.
And we were also able to bring Kong Co. onboard. Unfortunately, Kong is leaving us about mid-March. And so he was a short-lived employee, but we worked him to death while he was there. And so you'll see over in recruiting efforts, we have his position listed, but we're trying to get the last little bit out of him. And then Gunner joined us as just a PRN kind of part-time guy to help us out. And he's actually who's in charge of calling all the initial evaluations within the 48 hours. And so we've really been lucky to have him onboard to help us make sure that we get those evaluations in and scheduled. So currently, we have six and a half PTs that are working, two occupational therapy staffs, so one occupational therapy assistant and one occupational therapist. And then we have two speech-language pathologists. All that is supported by four and a half FTEs of administration to help us with scheduling and general getting the patients in the door. So we're very excited about the size of the staff we have. We are looking to increase the size of the staff. We do have two PT positions open. One is the general orthopedic position that will replace Kong. And then we also have the PT position with an emphasis on pelvic health that we need. We need to get that pelvic health program back up and running. We had it up for a short time, and then it was Tammy that was running that program for us. She moved and, well, she needed to move. And so we graciously let her go after begging her to stay. But, yeah, she's on. And so we're currently looking for another patient, another PT that can do pelvic health. On the OT side of things, we are definitely looking for an OT. I think we actually got some word from a candidate that we almost had hired, but then she had to go take care of her mom who got really sick for a little while. But I think she's about ready to come back into the area. So we got our fingers crossed that we'll be able to close the deal on that one. We really feel like we have something that will work well for us in that regard. But we are recruiting for another full-time OT to help with the home health side of things and also to backfill some of what Kat's doing on the outpatient side. Marcus, do you want to add anything to our staffing?
No, the only thing is I'm really excited to grow. I mean, as you can see from the numbers, we're actually improving upon where we were at pre-pandemic. And over the pandemic period, some of our folks took the opportunity to, you know, with six months off, they basically decided to retire. And with that, you know, we find ourselves in a position where we can grow and get, you know, some of these new folks into the game. So we're really looking forward to growing our program with these new folks.
All right. So just taking a quick look at what we're doing as far as programming. Obviously, we stay strong with our orthopedic practice, with our neurological practice, with our vestibular practice. What we're trying to accomplish is to build a diverse enough staff to be able to handle anything that walks through the door because we want to be a community-based service that doesn't need to refer people away from the hospital. And so one of the places that we've really focused on over the past year, year and a half, is pediatrics. If you look back at the last presentation that we did, we mentioned that pediatrics, we're really excited about it. We're excited about the new facility that we were building over there, and now it's up, it's running. And where before we were just dabbling in pediatrics, we feel that right now we're growing significantly, and we are the current pediatric providers in the area. We regularly receive referrals from Yakima, Moses Lake, from Quincy. So we are pulling in people from around, not just within your district, but even outside of the district. So that's really exciting. Part of that is based on the clinicians that we have. But there is also some equipment that the hospital has provided. The biggest thing on the speech side of things is having that pediatric feeding chair, which has allowed us to open up the ability to do our pediatric swallow evaluations, which is super exciting. And that's probably where a lot of the referrals from outside are coming from because not everyone has that ability. So that is super exciting. And we're grateful for the opportunity to do that. I know we have two speech paths that are excited about pediatric feeding, and that is a new thing to your community. So that's great. As far as lymphedema, lymphedema is a program that we've been running there for some time. The caseloads continue to increase as physicians begin to see more and more the benefits of having some lymphedema therapy. Chris Mattson, our certified occupational therapy assistant, just completed his certification, was it last weekend, I believe? And so he is working closely with Kat on our occupational therapist to make sure that his skill set is in line with hers. They're both trained by the same instructor, and so we hope to continue to see that program expand. In workplace health, we saw a sharp decline of activity in 2020, but we're currently trying to revive that initiative and get more interest in the workplace health and helping our LNI clients as well as working with some of the industries in the area to provide their post-op or employment tests as well as some ergonomic assessments and that kind of stuff. And so we're really excited to be working with workplace health. And we've already performed three of the post-op or employment tests this year. And then, of course, as we mentioned earlier, pelvic health, that is definitely something still on our radar that we would like to start up again, and we're currently recruiting for that position. So as far as programming and what's next, I know that one of the things that we do offer in our speech program is the LSVT Loud, and that's a specific program for Parkinson's patients. And what we'd like to do is to get some training for our clinicians on the PT side of things and do LSVT Big. And again, it's a specialized program, follows a strict protocol for treating and assisting our Parkinson's patients slow the decline of their movement. And so we're excited about potentially adding that this year to complement our Loud program. Outside of that, we do still look at the opportunities to increase both PT and OT, hoping to look at maybe talking y'all into buying us a Lightgate. And so a Lightgate is an unweighting device that is pretty fantastic and allows a lot of neurological or even your orthopedic cases that really can't be putting full weight on their lower extremities. And it really just unweights them and allows them to actually have a more freedom of movement so that you can get back to some of the normal movement patterns instead of the highly compensated movement patterns that you're going to see with decreased weight-bearing status and a neurological problem. So that would be Lightgate. And then on the speech side of things, we're really excited about potentially looking into a swallow evaluation that doesn't require the radiologist to be onsite, and that is called FEES, or the fibroendoscopic evaluation of swallowing. And we actually have this program in another one of our facilities in Washington. It's been wildly, wildly successful because the speech path can then do a swallow evaluation kind of whenever they need to, instead of having to schedule out the radiology room and all that kind of good stuff. So lots of exciting things with what we're doing in programming, what we're building currently in programming, and what we kind of have in our sites as far as what we can do next. So. I'm not going to say I'd be surprised if y'all don't have questions on this slide, but I feel like I've been talking really, really fast getting through that. Is there anything y'all would like me to slow down and talk a little bit more about?
Bill, this Kevin Martin, can you tell me a little bit about the difference between Lightgate and AlterG?
Maybe I can answer that one. Did you say the difference between Lightgate and AlterG?
Yes.
Okay, so Lightgate is generally a ceiling-mounted track system that uses straps and harnesses that you're basically pulling the weight off of them. And they have a lot more freedom of movement outside of a treadmill. The AlterG is a treadmill system that works on a positive pressure balloon around the treadmill. Don't get me wrong, those are awesome. We would love to have one of those, too. They're actually, I mean, they're fantastic. Woodway makes one that's not the AlterG, but I actually think this Woodway makes one that's not the Alter G, but I actually think this construction's a little bit better. But it's the Alter G is a positive pressure balloon that sits around a treadmill and allows you to unweight the person by basically pumping them up full of air underneath them. The Alter G is really good, but it's limited to really what you're seeing in the hip, what you're seeing in the knee, what you're seeing in the ankle, because that's the only thing that's unweighted. Whereas the Lightgate, you can unweight and take a lot of the strain off the spine and a lot of the core core control. So both are are huge tools for for being able to see specific caseloads. They're just two different tools.
Thank you. So Bill or Marcus, so you're recruiting for home health OT, which is that a service we provide right now? Or is that a news?
It is. We currently are serving the home health OT. And Rhonda will be able to weigh in a little bit here as well. But currently Kat is trying to service all those. And it's just, it's a lot. Kat is Kat is swimming and cats don't like to swim.
Home health PT do we have?
We have our own staff hired by KVH for physical therapy. So we have two physical therapists and two physical therapy assistants. If you remember Shelley Lauer, is that right? Shelley, what's her? Yeah, Rep Key, thank you. Too many Shellys. She retired, so she had been working for us in home health. And we've been over a year without an occupational therapist. So I reached out to Rehab Visions to see if they could help us recruit that position.
Okay. I have a quick question from Marcus. So we're going to roll out soon an employee engagement survey, so we'll get some data on that. But I'm sort of curious, I mean, first of all, if you wouldn't mind encouraging everyone to fill that out. I appreciate it. But would you let us know sort of how things are on the grounds among the employees? We're out pretty high. Everyone's pretty proud of what's going on there. What are your thoughts just on how the employees are doing with us?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think overall, the the quick answer is people are doing pretty good. But the more complex answer is after, you know, being serving as a healthcare provider for nine months during COVID, it's it's sort of a hard time to be a healthcare provider. And I don't think that's just PT world, I think that's everywhere. And it's hard to be told that your department's shutting down and then opening back up, but not knowing when you're coming back because you have to do it in a responsible way. And that, I won't say that was super easy for them. But everyone did a really good job with understanding why those decisions were being made. So even though it's something that's hard to do, it doesn't mean it was something we we didn't have to do. And everyone did a great job. And I would say now, people are really glad to be back to work. And they're glad to be treating their patients and doing, and they're doing a great job. And I think the thing that they're very eager to do is to start doing something new. So they've been doing, we've been sort of restricted and starting anything new because of COVID. So like the workplace health and being able to go out to the university and and talk to folks there about stuff, things that we sort of had on deck in the in the winter of 2019 and going into 2020. And they are very excited, I think, to start doing something new because you can kind of get into a little bit of a rut. And they are ready to go. That's all I have to say. They are they're ready to go do some great PT work in the community. And I think getting out in the community is something else they're really excited to do. Because if if there's nothing else I know, PTs are social animals. And they like to be out talking to people and being with people. And so, you know, hug your local PT when when COVID's over.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if Marcus just asked everybody to come up and hug him or not, but that's that was well said, Marcus, well said. And you know, just just from from the corporate side of things, I am seeing those same feelings in most of our locations. I mean, I think that there's, people are people are tired of the restrictions of the health crisis. But I'm sure you all are seeing the same thing. So they just want to get back to treating patients.
Any other questions? We really appreciate the presentation and just kind of keep it current. We'll look forward to the next one.
Fantastic. Yeah, one last slide on marketing, if y'all are interested. We're we're currently doing, our our marketing director here at the home office is sending out quarterly marketing resources that includes Facebook posts, news stories, promotional ideas focusing on all three disciplines. We're very excited about that. Marcus has access to a print shop that allows him to print different cards and different flyers and stuff with your with your logo information on it. All he has to do is jump online, find those and print them out and they get shipped to him directly. And so again, he can use those for the physicians, for the community and his marketing efforts. I know Marcus, our, I mean, our marketing director here at the home office, and I have all been working on a marketing plan focusing on the Medical Arts Center to try and bring those patients back into the KVH therapy instead of the clinic that's there in the building. And then just as far as specific to speech therapy, I know that Siri, our speech therapist, has appeared on Dr. John's radio show a couple times. So exciting times. And I think that we're trying to to bring some of those marketing efforts back home, back local, and trying to help our clinicians grow and and expand their practice. So.
And it just occurred to me, therapy would be a great gamble. If you haven't seen the facilities and when Mandy's back market, we have a couple of board members. I know most of you had a chance to tour all the new facilities when they first opened, but that would be a really, really good gamble to see what's going on there. So I'll ask Mandy this. Be nice to her.
Oh, sure. That'd be great. Welcome it.
We'll make a note.
Great, anything else? Appreciate your time. Yeah, very, very informative.
Thank you very much. We're happy to be partners. And I really enjoy, personally, I enjoy working with everyone there. And so it's, I miss you all. I hope to see y'all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If it's all right, we're gonna, I'm gonna bow out.
So we'll move to item six, reports and dashboards, starting with quality. And Mandy Olson, chief quality officer.
I'm happy to answer that. I think there's, if there's anything you had questions about, something though. The new 2021 dashboard, but truly, really all it changed was there are some different home health and hospice measures. So the hospice pain control is new. I'm going to have this average length of stay, length of service is new. And also, I just, I guess I'd like to, we are so excited to have Nicole Hilderman. She is, Anna said today, it looks like they're an old married couple already. So they, she's just a fabulous fit for our team and is doing a great job already.
I had a one quick question about something I'm here that I didn't understand.
Okay.
So the needle sticks, partially due to changing regulations wise?
So with the COVID crisis, there you have the, it's not just been five, but there has been different products that we're having to use that are not what the typical safety devices, needles, syringes that staff are using. And so that has contributed to at least a couple of those needle sticks. And we are seeing also people just feeling like they're very busy and they're tired, like they mentioned. And so I think, you know, that's that somewhat inattention, right? Because their brains are just so full and so they're they're making mistakes.
How many needle sticks have we had in vaccines on our own staff, vaccines on?
Well, yeah, at least a couple, at least one has been there. I think there may have been two. And I think that's that's kind of the device they keep, right? We're getting shipped these needles and safety devices and things. It's not always what we would stock or use, it's what's coming with the vaccine. So some of that is, you know, lack of familiarity with the device. I think there are actually two.
But that's tens and tens of thousands additional shots.
That's the other thing I was going to mention.
The volume is up.
We ought to get some numbers about percentage of, the percentage of needle sticks versus how many injections we've got.
What's the denominator?
It's like nothing compared to normal times.
That's true.
I've seen it out in the retail area too. The supply of syringes are so difficult and there's multiple safety needles out there, but they all activate separately, different ways. And unless you mess around with them for a while, it's kind of difficult to figure out how to activate the safety syringe, a safety needle sometimes, then it does become problematic.
And actually, that was two of the cases. They were trying to activate the safety device.
Right.
Is when it happened. So I mean, it seems like that shouldn't be possible, right? That when you're using the safety part of it to prevent needle sticks, you shouldn't be able to then get one. But that is what has happened in two cases, I know.
Yeah.
The setup though at the vaccine clinic, the way the tables are set up and the ergonomics of giving the vaccine and getting it into the sharps container is really nice.
Yeah.
It's a really good flow. So I think that that's definitely a player in my kind of more. So and the vaccine monitor.
Yes.
Vaccine monitor is top notch for sure, yes.
Yes. I will say one of the things that's great about the vaccine clinics is the staffing number. I don't think our vaccine administrators are feeling rushed. And that's really important too, to prevent needle sticks, is not feeling like you're rushed or interrupted. And honestly, the social distancing helps with like noise or interruptions. So I think I think the rate is probably pretty good considering the the volume.
Even on some of the big issues, the flow, the cadence feels reasonable. It never seems overwhelming.
And Mandy, the next point, the three medication events, is there anything worth expanding upon there? Is it a mix up of medications? Is it a wrong dosage or?
I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you. I don't remember from our data sharing meeting last week. But I could I could look into that for you if you'd like more information. As far as I know, there's no trend.
Okay, you just.
A very good year.
You thought it might be related to the training on the new IV pumps and it's a slightly different approach?
Okay, it's in my notes there.
It's your bullet point, the last, the summary of improvement opportunities, the last.
The one had, yeah, there was probably, I don't remember the total numbers, but there was an issue with the, and Vicki might remember, there was an issue with the new pumps and the way that the drug settings on them were set. And so this category though means that someone had to be additionally monitored, but there wasn't.
No issues, yeah.
But yeah, that's, I can't recall.
No problems at all, just curious.
Yeah.
I really enjoy all the ways that the vaccine data is broken down. The level of confidence of what angles people.
Can think any of the. Yes. So in the future too, she did a really cool thing this last, I couldn't get it in in time. She did kind of a heat map on the ages, which was really neat to see. So you could see, you can see it if you really look at it, right? Where it's shifting from that that 65 to 85 year old. And it's it's starting to shift slower here in the last few weeks. But it's kind of cool to see when she puts the color onto it.
And employee vaccination rate is right around 65% still that was the last.
And looking at our, what Dr. Hibbs is very interested in getting those numbers and our nursing directors as far as like how each department is doing. And they've got, they're they're excited to be able to compare a little bit. So we're going to be getting that data out to them soon.
Are staff or has the department been excited that they don't want to? Are they open about expressing why that is?
Um, well, I don't know the answer to that. And because of that, Nicole's actually drafted a survey that we hope to send out to staff to ask them about, you know, whether the concerns are or if there's, if there's anything to to help people be more comfortable, get more, and whatever it is. She was drafting that this week. Trying to balance, you know, it is a very personal decision and it's not required at this point. But making sure we understand what people's needs are and providing them every opportunity. At some point, maybe making sure that we we know everyone's been offered the vaccine and have that documented. So, you know, we don't want to be bullying people, but we want to make sure we've provided every opportunity for our employees to get it.
On your on your graphs and the first page, lower left-hand corner, median time to TPA, the missing plot points on the end, does that just mean this is a very infrequent thing? And so there are no plot points for the last three months or so?
There are no patients who are eligible for TPA for this month.
I was thinking of this the other day, if we're close to 15,000 vaccines, total cases have we had of positive COVID?
In the county?
In the county, just to get a number of.
Yesterday it was 2077 cases.
2,000.
Okay.
On the county side right now, it's got 20, well, 2541 on the.
Plus 18,000 total, potentially million people. We're getting there. It's gonna happen.
Yeah, and I mean, these numbers are already old too, you know, so.
Put out a data report, they just got a report, 17.5% of the county that received, had completed the vaccination course. I would say 20% started had received a lethal dose. White word vaccination registry, 17,000 persons so far.
Why don't we notify the people who live in Kansas County, but if they have an infection?
Or not?
Not, no.
If if they got it at a site that is entering it into the Washington Immunization Registry, then the state knows that our community member got it. I don't know if the county, if the public health department could pull a report in ways, is what it's called, by zip code and see kind of the numbers for our counties or not.
Are we still getting regular shipments of the vaccine? And are we filling all this available slots as the slots become available? Or is that getting more challenging?
This week is tough. So when I left at four o'clock, there was still 100 spots open tomorrow.
And is that because of the restrictions? I know the restrictions keep easing, but some of that's in the future.
My opinion is that it has to do with, we're ready to move on to the next phase and can't yet.
And is that done at the governor's level? Who decides who can get vaccinated in our county?
Yeah, and the governor, and it's not a county by county thing. They've made the decision that the whole state in terms of releasing new ways of people who are eligible, the state's going to go together. So I think the sense among the rural counties is that we're ready to go. But we still have with the urban counties trying to catch up and make sure that they've reached hard to reach populations and things like that, so.
In fact, the state epidemiologist in a recent hospital call was saying too, that he would like us to move faster too.
Can it be held against us in the future? You know, if they give us fewer doses in the future, because they said you didn't even need what you had, even though we couldn't give it to people who would want it?
That's what they have said they will do.
Interesting strategy.
That will happen. That's my personal opinion. I think they'll keep giving us vaccines because we we give it.
And do you have a waitlist where, so stuff doesn't go to waste, you say, come in, let's use this?
The county has a waitlist, there's thousands of people on it. And I was making phone calls. There's thousands of people on it and I was making phone calls myself today. So yeah, we get on the phone and.
So will it get a little easier then when it officially opens up for a broader range and we start filling up all those spots again earlier?
I think we're still not sure what the next groups, younger age groups are going to, how they're going to feel a little about it and what we can expect as far as uptake. I think so far, just anecdotally, what we've seen with some of these younger populations is that they, they aren't, there is more hesitance. And we had a lot of cancellations today too. So I don't know if that, there's something there too about different generations and keeping appointments or not or.
Could it be they got a dose somewhere else or?
That wasn't the sense today.
Okay.
Well, I know that when teachers and childcare providers, they opened as a group, the reach out to the childcare providers in particular was not very successful. So a high declination rate among that population. And one of my concerns about when we will know we're done is that there is no documenting people who are declining. So we are hoping, you know, we're thinking we've reached all these people and that they know they have the opportunity to get vaccinated. But there's no official paper trail that says we asked and they declined. So I'm concerned about that globally. And one of the things the health department, local health department here has been talking about, and so has the hospital association, is we are getting access to have weekend clinics as well. So in Kiddatass County, the public health department's going to take that initiative. They will be running any weekend vaccination clinics. Our folks are just, I liken them to rubber bands. We've gotten stretched too far. Public health recognizes that. So it'll probably be Johnson and Johnson, I think they're talking about doing them again, relatively small volume, a couple hundred over the weekend kind of thing. So, but our team will probably continue to focus their energy on these days.
But still able to use every, every bit of vaccine.
Yeah, the only time we've had waste is if there's been a malfunction of the syringe or that's it. So we have not wasted a dose that's ready to be given.
Yeah, I think Rich said five top.
Overall, yes, that have been wasted because of malfunction.
Yeah, since the beginning.
Do you feel like you're, you have to work pretty hard for that last little few? Like, hey, we've got to call.
Sometimes it depends on the date. Today, yes, yes. And I think there were instances of that last week and, yeah.
It's especially hard when you have the cancellations because you thought you have that arm and then you don't have that arm.
Yep.
Yesterday, we had two no shows at 4:30.
And then you're running up against the expiration date of it too. So once it's drawn up, depending on the vaccine, it's only good for a certain amount of time.
You just, at that point, you just go grab somebody.
Yep.
On the board. I encourage all of you to take a look, public health, kind of press release with the long form. I'm sure you are familiar with this form, but it's much more descriptive about who's eligible than the infographic. The infographic, the small, colorful phases, one through B or whatever the phases are, seems fairly restrictive. But when you look at the long form about who, who is actually considered part of these tiers, it's actually far more robust than a lot of people realize. So if you know people who want the vaccine and think, gosh, you know, I feel like I should be eligible, encourage them to take a look at that form and see if they actually fall in.
People I know have had problems have gone and filled out the online thing. At the end, they're said, it's not time for you yet, go away.
So the, the form, the long form and the face finder don't.
Perfectly matched.
There's not a complete.
But doesn't face finder win? Because that's what you have to print out to bring with you technically.
So the, the long form and say, this is why I'm eligible. The thing is, is the county is not determining eligibility. That's not the role. So the individual has to determine that they're eligible.
Okay.
I agree with you, Erica, absolutely, because the description in the long form too has a lot more leeway and discretion in it than, you know, face finder or just a flow chart makes clear.
A multitude of scenarios that are driven on the long form that I think apply to a lot of people who don't realize it.
Yes, like saying, you know, if you work within, you know, for three hours with this many people, it really gives more discretion.
It was in a press release recently, but I can.
Is there a link to it or something or?
I can find that and then.
And we are required to make a good space effort. So it's not like we go through people's pockets or.
They do ask for documentation.
Anything else? Thank you. Thanks for your work. PEO report.
I don't really have anything to add. I'm going to make a request that Rhonda, please talk a little bit about the work that Zane's able to do now when you go through your ancillary report. Because Zane Davies, who's our athletic trainer, we're getting rave reviews on it. I'd just like Rhonda to be able to address that. And then I'm going to officially steal Scott's thunder and tell you that Jason Adler's wife had Ila a couple days ago. So Jason has another baby at home. So we'll be shoulder them. So it's official in public now. So Jason will be hard to come by for the next few days, so. And that's it. I, I will be out of the office beginning April 4th for about 12 days. But I will be zooming in and be available.
I hope you guys all, hey Bob, I know you're aware of this, the values alignment and with the new contracts in place, sounds like everything is going very well. With productivity up, people are making more money and being more productive. About the.
So I think that's probably what most people are really excited about. I just can't overstate how much I appreciate having common language and common goals and knowing what moves from a standardized contract. So it, you know, I, it's easy to forget how chaotic it felt two years ago when you were trying to talk about efficiencies in the clinic or trying to encourage providers to be more productive and explain why. But I, I just think having that common contracting, common understanding is incredible.
And I think Jason going through and explaining to each provider who asks questions that.
Every month, yes.
This is how it's laid out makes it just a lot more transparent.
Well, and, and I think as he's done that, he's, he's brought it surface question. What did we intend about this? And, and we've dealt with those and dealt with them transparently.
Yeah. And the only comment I had was on the employee engagement survey on the April 5th. Could you talk about that a little bit and maybe Matt also? Because this is something that the board's very much invested in and.
Right.
Would like to get higher than 65%.
So what we are hoping for is, and I know Matt's been working with Jen Schrader and Amanda Scott will be back hopefully by then, but we really want this to be from the board, a request from the board for this input. So the board has actionable input from employees that we can take into the strategic planning discussion. So I, I think that's a fairly unique act. Usually it's the administrator and senior leaders out. But Matt's going to have a request of employees to please participate. I think you're going to be part of the employee forum, going through some of the questions and talking about how the information will be used for success. So we'd like to have really good, high turnout, but then also real quality, thoughtful comments from both of them.
And that'll be released April 5th and will go on for how long?
I, I think they're looking at about two weeks, keeping it out there for about two weeks. And they, they may have slid that April 5th date now, since I think. Michelle, the forum is scheduled for when?
The forum is the 6th. I'm actually working on materials right now as we speak. So we're looking at the survey opening on the 7th and be open for two weeks on the 21st. And then I'm hoping, you know, we can review with Matt on, at what time can we do a presentation of results to the staff? And so I'm working on campaign material that will get to his review probably tonight or tomorrow.
Yeah, the big difference, one of the differences this time is it is something that the board is going to be sort of forward and saying, look, this is something we want. Whereas maybe in the past, it was perceived as just another HR thing they had to do. But yeah, this is really valuable for us. And so that's one of the messages I'm going to take in the forum.
And what is, what can the board do that kind of, what else can we do other than?
Any ideas, Michelle?
It really just depends on how engaged, you know, it's like some of the fun, the fun concepts is, you know, we hope to have an internal, kind of like a fun competition between departments on goal rates and things like that. It's up to the board on how, you know, do we want to put a carrot out for anything? We've got to walk that, you know, part of my job is to walk that fine line in the communications of, I liken it to an election where we can tell from the auditor's office who has submitted a vote, but we don't know what the vote is. And so my understanding through this process is we're going to be using that system. So you guys can do reach outs to employees that may not have completed the survey. So it's going to be important through our communication that, I think that's probably the best comparison so people understand it really is a confidential survey. It's just a whether or not it's, they put it in the mailbox type thing.
I do think using board appeals and the internet, you know, having, you know, the commissioner leaving out, you know, remind people to please participate so that the engagement strategy has information to use in. So Michelle will take your picture and write both the person at the end.
And there's another employee forum on the 5th? Is that?
Six?
Six.
Six? Would it be useful to have like Bob talk about it on the forum to the employees or is Matt going to do it?
I was thinking like, I mean, I don't know, go into the clinics and hand out cards and say, please fill us out, it's super important to us. I don't know, I, it would be, I mean, the higher the number you get, just the reliability factors come into play and you get good data, so.
All right.
Anything we can do to help out? It would be nice to have a higher number. And I always question these surveys that are at 20% return. It's like.
Maybe you need to pick some threshold and if, as a group, we hit that threshold, there's a gift to the, to all the employees, you know, ice cream day or whatever it is to, you know, celebrate.
Matt said something about giving away a Tesla. Winning department gets to throw a softball.
This is kind of a board driven activity, but I'm not sure Julie in the dumb.
So, yeah, I think the board's probably interested in doing, if you come up with something, Michelle, how we can be more active or see our part or anything you come up with.
I could come up with a lot of things to make you really active. And so we can do a reach out and kind of check on availability and how visible you want to be in the different locations. Yeah, let's, let's connect.
So have screensaver or something on the internet or?
Oh, yeah. It'll be, for the two weeks that it's running, it'll be absolutely everywhere on the internet for sure.
And the last thing, I almost forgot. Michelle called me last night to let me know that Representative Yubara had reached out and our two projects for capital funding made it through the House version. So if we're very hopeful typically, they don't go through and amend the actual list of items approved after the center. So hopefully it will be capital names, so we will plan and thank you to Representative Yubara regardless. She's definitely been pulling forward.
Nice. Anything else, Julie? So operations and Vicky, Chief Nursing Officer.
Good evening, everyone. My report is there in your packet on page 30. It's pretty brief, which doesn't really say that everything in our departments isn't brief. It's been really busy with the new service lines and preparing for nurse, new service lines, a lot of education going out to staff. But I'll entertain any questions you might have about my report or anything else.
I think you, yeah, it's exciting that we have Dr. Sam at working with the wound care folks and.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, prior to coming, we referred those patients down to other facilities, mostly down to Yakima. So it's great that he's here to see those patients when they're in the wound clinic.
And Vicky, can you expand it all on the non radioactive tracer that we're kind of testing out? It sounds like, you know, a great thing at this level for this small of a community. Are you?
Right. Amy, yeah.
It's kind of do with the breast surgery, yeah.
Correct, right. And it's for cancer patients and markers to, to determine, you know, how far that, that nodule or, or cells have migrated or, or just to really pinpoint them to make sure they're getting everything at that time. So, yeah, that's new to us. Dr. Meyer, yeah, we had our first patient a week before last. It was, it was actually, it went really well.
Good, great to hear.
I mean, so we've hit the flight point where we've got providers that we've never had before in the county and it's, it's amazing. And we hear good feedback from, you know, patients. It just, it really feels good, like, oh my goodness, we're making a big difference and we're doing it here in Kiddatass County.
Right. It's exciting for everyone.